I'm going to call this meeting to order. Can everyone stand for the
I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
I have the reading of the minutes from the last Board of Commissioners meeting. Did everyone have an opportunity to review them? And do I have a motion to approve?
I'm moved.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opportunity for the public to address the board agenda items only.
We did not receive any emails today.
Okay. Proclamation presentation 21-0111. I'll read the first one here. It's called distracted driving awareness month. Whereas on average, more than 700 injury crashes involve distracted driving. An economic toll of all motor vehicle crashes in the United States in only exceed $400 billion. And whereas talking on a mobile phone, even in hands-free mode, texting and programming your dashboard infotainment system or GPS device can divert your attention away from driving and result in physical or cognitive distraction. And whereas spring is a time when people begin to log more miles on the road, making it imperative to focus attention on motor vehicle injury risks and preventions. And whereas the residents of Lackawanna County, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and all citizens of the United States of America deserve to live in communities that promote safe driving behaviors and healthy lifestyles. And whereas April is National Distracted Driving Awareness Month, and the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration and the Lackawanna County Highway Safety Program work to promote policies, practices, and procedures leading to increased safety, protection, and health, and business and industry, in school and colleges, on roads and highways, and in homes and communities. And now therefore, we, Debbie Dominic, Jerry Natariani, and Chris Shermack, commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby recognize and proclaim April 2021 to be Distracted Driving Awareness Month in Lackawanna County. And I just want to say before we put on our guests is that I became aware of this being of April being Distracted Driver Awareness Month by speaking with Eileen Miller, who very tragically lost her son, Paul Miller Jr., to a distracted driver. He was on his way to work and a tractor trailer driver dropped his cellphone and went to pick it up, crossed the median, and ended up striking her son head-on, killing her son, who was 21, just one month shy of his 22nd birthday. So it really hit home to me. I'm an offender. I am an offender. I do this, but I'll tell you after hearing her story, it really, it puts things into perspective. So first, we're going to have, I believe, Christine.
Yeah, Christina Sullivan. She's our Community Traffic Safety Grant Coordinator.
Go ahead.
Good morning, commissioners. Through education and awareness, Lackawanna County Highway Safety Program is committed to reducing fatalities and crashes on and off our roadways. As you discussed, April is National Distracted Driving Awareness Month. Distracted driving is dangerous and includes risky behaviors such as texting and driving, talking on the phone, eating while driving, putting on makeup, just to name a few. According to the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, in 2019, there were 3,142 lives claimed in distracted driving crashes. In 2019, there were 299 crashes in Lackawanna County and 237 crashes in Lackawanna County due to distracted driving. The 2020 fatalities were just released yesterday also, and I don't have that information in front of me, unfortunately. Distracted driving awareness, this effort focuses on changing the behaviors of drivers through awareness, education, and enforcement efforts. As you discussed, Commissioner, also Paul Miller was killed in a crash in 2010 along with 12 other people that were in another van. They were injured. Every opportunity Eileen Miller has, she advocates on behalf of her son to change driving behaviors and supports the efforts of her highway safety partners. Thank you for recognizing Distracted Driving Awareness Month and to help raise awareness along with Eileen Miller. Thank you, commissioners.
Now, just as an opening for Eileen, the first bill, Eileen, what was the first bill called?
It was House Bill 1684. This is our third session on trying to get legislation passed. Three years ago, I got to speak before the Transportation Committee at the Capitol. That was the first time we were actually able to get the bill through. We changed the bill number. It's House Bill number 37 now. We just got it through again a few weeks ago, so it is now in the House. And the name of it is the Driver Enhanced Responsibility Bill, because we feel we need to change the name of it to actually, you know, make it responsible for people. So it just came out of Transportation. It's in the House now. It's ready to be called on the calendar now. We revamped it, rechanged it. We did everything that, you know, the state representatives want us to do to get this bill across. We want people to understand, we are not trying to get people to take, you know, things away from them. What we want to do is make everybody safe on the road. We want them to know that this bill is not an overreaching bill. We have a lot of people that don't want it, but we have more, right now, we have more people on the bill than ever. We have the state police. We have the Coroner's Association, the Trauma Society. We have so many letters of support. So what this bill actually is, is you can still use Bluetooth. So we're not saying you can't have your phone. We're saying you can have it, but what we're saying is, is you have to mount it. You can't have it in your hands, because having it in your hands, then you can text, then you can video, then you can do Snapchat, you could scroll your emails. Taking your eyes off that road is when all those crashes happen. And we call them crashes because they are preventable. It's not an accident. That means that it is preventable. So with this bill also, I'm going to reach you a little bit more of what it is. You have to pull off the road if you want to use your phone. This also makes a vehicle while holding or supporting an electronic wireless device regarding of the driver's age a primary, and that is our goal. It needs to be a primary offense. It carries $100 fine with no points off your license. So we don't want to penalize people. We just want to say clearly, stay off your phone. Don't hold it. Also, the increase of the fine for texting while driving will go from $50 to $100. Also, it clarifies that no person can be cited for both texting while driving and driving while supporting or holding an electronic wireless device at the same time. Also, it creates a five-year optional sentence for enhancement for those guilty of homicide by vehicle, as well as a violation of the handheld probation during the time of the incident, minors that occur in the texting ban. Also, it is to ensure a person under the age of 18, prior to taking a driver's exam, view education materials provided by PennDOT on the site of the dangers of distracted driving. And also, it requires that a portion on the exam of traffic laws to contain at least one question about distracted driving. So it's a very common sense. It's very, very common sense law. It's just telling you, you know, not to hold that phone. It cannot be anyway supported by your body. It has to be mounted. And also, we're very clear, you can use Bluetooth. In my world, my world, since I lost my son, I never turn my phone on in my vehicle. It is never on. I don't use Bluetooth. I never have this on in my vehicle. To me, this button right here, the off button, is the button that I use, because once you lose your child, there's no texts, there's no phone call, there's no Snapchat, and there's nothing that is worth any person's life. And you also don't want to be the one to kill somebody else or someone else because of that. So what we're basically asking is that you, everybody, reach out to your state representatives and ask them to call and to make sure that they are on HB 37, to be on this bill that it goes to as a primary offense. And all our neighboring states have it, New York, New Jersey, Maryland. So when they enter Pennsylvania, it's also, we want to be consistent with all the other states. They all have this law. When we first started, there was only 12 states, and now 25 other states have this law. So we need to be consistent with the other, without the other states to come right into Pennsylvania and mainstream it. So it's time for Pennsylvania to make this, you know, everybody's safe on the road. It's not
Eileen, your first bill was passed, but as a secondary offense. Right? Meaning you can't get pulled over for that?
The texting, the texting bill. But right now, right, we need, we need this to be the primary. We need
Meaning a primary offense, meaning if they see you on the phone, you could be pulled over?
Correct. Exactly.
I mean, in your conversations, do you, you expect resistance for this bill?
We have always gotten a little bit of resistance, and that's why it's taken the six years, but this is the most we've ever gotten. Right now, we are having issues with profiling, and that has been our issues. But we're, we want them to know we understand it, especially now. We're listening. We want them to understand, we do understand their issues with being profiled, but we're working with the police, we're working with everybody, we're working to get that right now. And we don't want people to be profiled, but that is an issue with the world right now. But we're working through that. We're having big conversations about that. And we're looking at the data with all of that. The state police now have, are doing all of that. So we're working through all of those issues.
Eileen, Eileen, just so for people that don't understand, who didn't speak to you before me, when you say profiling, are you talking about racial profiling?
Yes.
In regards to who the police pull over?
Yes.
They're concerned that by making this a primary offense, it will increase racial profiling?
Correct. Correct. And we have been having conversations about that even before this had happened, you know, in America. I knew in other states that were having that issue, and that's why we were working through that. And hence, with the world that it is today, you know, we do understand those conversations. And certainly, we wouldn't want that to happen to anybody. So we want to make sure we get that all cleared in the bill and all taken care of. So those conversations are being taken care of and were being worked on before that. But we clearly wouldn't want that to happen to anybody. You know what I mean? We certainly, so we're listening, we're paying much attention to it. You won't want that to happen to anybody, but we've been working on that with the bill, and that was one of the issues.
The bottom line is if they stay off their phone, they're not going to get pulled over.
Exactly.
It's got nothing to do with profiling.
100%, if they're, if the phone is being mounted and if the phone is, you know, not touching your body, it would not be pulled over. Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
So it's bill, it's bill number 37.
House Bill number 37.
All your senators, call your state reps, and tell them that you want this to be a primary offense.
Correct. Correct. And it will 100% save lives. There's no doubt in my mind, if this bill was back in 2010, my son would be alive today, no doubt. And it, like I said, to me, I would love a complete fan, but we are nowhere near that in Pennsylvania. I don't understand why it's a common sense law.
I don't understand how they can correlate that with profiling. It just doesn't, it's not logical. If you don't have the phone, you're not using the phone. It's got nothing to do with race.
Well, what I found out in government is there's a lot of things that are not common sense in laws. Unfortunately, it's taking six years.
You're right. It's the legal system, not the justice system.
Correct. But I'm going to keep fighting forever, and I'm going to work hard, and I'm not giving up. And I thank you for doing this. And, you know, even if we can get it through, you can see on every corner where you are that you can see, you know, eight out of 10 cars, they all have their phone up to their ear, dabbing the way. And that brings me right back to, you know, my son and where he would be today. And you see them all over, all the time. You know, we all know not to do it, and everybody knows not to do it, but they continually need to do it. And that's where we need education. You know, we need legislation. You know, this is where we need it. So, and we need the law enforcement. So, but hopefully, better days are coming. I'm not giving up. I'm going to be here, and they know Representative Rosemary Brown's not going anywhere. We know we're going to keep pushing through, and we need to get this through.
Thank you, Eileen.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your hard work and our condolences. I mean, it's really awful, but thanks for the hard work, and it's a great program.
Thank you.
And if I make it to Senate, if I make it to Senate, I will certainly look into that.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you all for the proclamation. I really appreciate it. And if we can get that down to the, to the representatives, that would be awesome.
Sure. Thank you, Eileen.
Thank you kindly. Thank you for always keeping and supporting me. I really appreciate it.
Have a good day.
Good.
Okay. So the next one is proclamation 21-0116 for Donate Life Month. Okay. Whereas April is National Donate Life Month, a time for all Lackawanna County residents to recognize the generosity of those who have saved lives by becoming an organ, eye, tissue, marrow, and blood donors, and encourage others to follow their lead. And whereas the resilience of organ donors and transplantation professionals have provided more than 39,000 life-saving or life-enhancing organ transplants in the last year alone, there is still an overwhelming need for organ transplants, as there are more than 107,000 people currently on the national transplant waiting list, and another person is added to that list every nine minutes. And whereas the national transplant list also includes almost 2,000 children under the age of 18, and while very small children must receive donations from other young children, older children and adults can often match. In many cases, that means generous adults can contribute to the end of the pediatric transplant waiting list. Whereas every day, 17 people die while waiting for a transplant, we all have the power to help abolish that statistic. One donor can save up to eight lives through organ donation and can improve another 75 lives through eye and tissue donation. Now therefore, we, Debbie Dominic, Jerry Natariani, and Chris Shermack, commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby recognize and proclaim April 2021 to be Donate Life Month in Lackawanna County, and encourage all residents to become organ donors by visiting www.orgendonor.gov. And here to talk, Tracy.
Reggie?
Reggie?
Reggie Mariani from our Controller's Office.
There you are.
He's our chief auditor.
Morning, Reggie.
Oh, I don't think he has audio.
I'll check with him. He might be on mute. Well, I'll be right back. Oh, we can't hear him.
I don't think he has audio, so we'll
Gary, do you want to speak about it real quick?
Yeah.
Reggie?
I can tell you, as you probably know, Reggie Mariani is a very valuable employee of the Controller's Office here at the county, and he's our chief internal auditor. And he is in need of a kidney, and we hope very much that he can find one as soon as possible. And we hope everyone out there in the county and the world will look to donate when they are able to. And I'm not sure if Reggie would like to say something. I'll find out if, you don't think he has it, Tracy?
No. Not at all.
Okay. Reggie, you don't have audio. And just, I let everybody know that you are in need of a kidney, and we hope you get one as soon as possible. Come on over this side.
This side, why don't you just
Bring him over here.
I apologize. My audio wasn't working. So sorry.
Morning, Reggie.
Good morning. At first, I thought I probably shouldn't be the person speaking on this subject. Probably a professional would do a better job. But my girlfriend Cindy said, it's about time somebody puts a face to the proclamation. So I figured, well, I'm not a very good speaker. My only experience is during an annual Section 29 Athletic Club reunion, I do stand-up comedy, sort of like Don Rickles and Archie Bunker type of stuff.
Well, you can do that here, too.
Well, I don't know. I might be, you know, on my league, but I want to thank you for providing me with the opportunity. My past participation at these meetings usually was of financial nature, but this proclamation hits home to me. As Gary said, I recently, about three weeks ago, I was approved for the National Kidney Transplant List. There's over 107,000 people on the transplant list. The acceptance process that I went through was very involved. It took a year, and like, everybody who gets on this list has to go through this process. Various examinations, you got medical histories, you got testing, you go to cardiologists, you go to pulmonologists, nephrologists, you have AKGs, you have CAT scans, colonoscopies, stress tests, can't even pronounce some of the tests that, you know, they put you through. But I'm sure that before they want to give you a kidney, they want to make sure you're an acceptable candidate. So I've been going down to the Lehigh Valley Hospital, basically because of their 95% success rate with kidney transplants. So back and forth, probably made 10 trips back and forth down there. Last week, they caught me by surprise. They said, you have to go to the hepatitis specialist. I figured, well, why do I have to go to a hepatitis specialist? I never had hepatitis. And they said, well, we have to do it because recently, there was some advancements in medicine where if you go through an eight-to-10-week regimen, they can cure hepatitis C. So not only does it benefit the hepatitis patients, but provides an additional pool of donors that you're able to give their organs. So an anticipated wait period of five years in the past has been reduced now to three years because of these additional donors that are out there. So just envision, you're at a checkout line, there's 100,000 people in the checkout line. And now, another checkout line is opened up because all these donors are there, and 40% of the people now can move over to the other line, and that's make it more possible for everybody in both lines to get checked out and get their transplant as quickly as possible. Another way of getting it is kidney is through a compatible donor. That could be a family member or friend who specifically wants to give you an organ. It amazed me about three weeks ago, one of the row officers came down, and when she heard I had kidney issues, she offered her kidney. It's really touching. Sometimes, though, you know, your friends may not be compatible with you, but they may compatible with someone else on the waiting list. Like, for instance, they call this pairing, and I'll just use these people everybody know, so that you can put it together. Let's say Reggie Jackson wanted to give me his kidney, but he's not compatible with me. Well, I was a good fielder, he was a good hitter, everybody knew that. And say J-Law wanted to give A-Rod her kidney, but you see now in the tabloids, they're not too compatible either, but that's not the criteria. Let's say, so Reggie Jackson being compatible with A-Rod, would give his to A-Rod, and J-Law would give me hers. So that wouldn't make me dance and sing any better than I do now, because I do have my, my issues there, but I would definitely get a kidney that would function normally. I was first diagnosed with kidney disease in 1970, so I've been living with it for over 50 years, and the functions have steadily dropped. About eight years ago, a friend of mine said, you should get on the kidney transplant list. I says, well, I says, I'm still functioning at like 25%. I'm good. He said, no, you should really think about it. Well, in retrospect, that was probably the meathead that Archie Bunker was talking about for not doing that way back when. So when my percentage actually drops down to 60%, I wound up going on dialysis, which requires four hours treatment three times a week, and it may produce unpleasant effects. I watch my diet and monitor weekly about a nephrologist. That's why it's important for me to try to find a donor as soon as possible. There has been strides. There's a kidney project headed by Dr. Fossil from Vanderbilt University. He's working in collaboration with the University of San Francisco in developing an artificial kidney, and they've made so much progress that they're working with the FDA. Matter of fact, this week, they have a meeting to start clinical trials. But, you know, clinical trials take two or three years, so you don't expect to have this being rolled out before that time. Now, the function of the kidney is to remove waste products and excess fluids from the body and reduce functionality, causes swelling, fluid buildup, blood pressure, heart failure, just a couple. Fortunately, although I've had some of these symptoms, I've been able to work full-time with the county, plus I do 150, 155 TACT preparations over the year. My goal is to continue to work and enjoy life. I had support of my family and friends, who I really love dearly, and I would want to see my family grow and continue to be part of my life for as long as possible. I appreciate if anyone offering to extend their gift of life, any type of gift. Can you imagine like an eye donor, a person being able to see for the first time, or someone who lost a sight and being able to see again? You know, these are miracles of life that you just, you just can't imagine. So I appeal to everyone viewing this or listening to this, to please consider being a donor. For kidney transplant, you can phone Lehigh Valley Kidney Transplant Donor Coordinator. I want to see the number, 610
Let me read it off, you done it?
Yeah, yeah. 610-402-8506, option five. Everything is confidential. You don't know who you're, if you want to give my name as you want to donate it to me, that's fine. If you want to donate to anybody else, it's confidential. They don't say who the donor is, they don't say who the recipient is, but I appreciate, you know, if you don't help me out, just help somebody else out. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Reggie.
You, Reg.
Thanks, Reggie.
We'll move on to resolutions. 21-0112, approving current payables. But I'm assuming everybody had an opportunity to review them.
Thank you. Approving current payables, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the following payables. Lackawanna County General Fund numbers, 319706-320671, inclusive totaling $18,298,576.30. Electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts totaling $6,2,563.78, adopted at a regular meeting the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April 21st, 2021. Madam Commissioner?
Do I have a motion to approve the payables? Do I have a second?
Second.
On the question, all in favor? Aye. 21-0098, approving Office of Youth and Family Services Professional Service Agreements.
Be it resolved, that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the Department of Human Services Office of Youth and Family Services Professional Services Agreements for the fiscal year 2021 through 2022, with the following advocacy alliance, Catherine McQually Center, William Women's Research Center, Scranton Counseling Center, Forensic Counseling Associates, LSLC, Heather Stewart MSNCC, Richard Gold, Anthony LaBassi, and the Barbara J. Hart Justice Center, adopted at a regular meeting the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on on April 21st, 2021. Madam Commissioner, here to speak upon that is our Director of Human Services, Mr. William Browning.
Morning Commissioners.
Morning.
This is uh, the, the, the first batch of our, our next fiscal year of contracts. It includes counseling, case management services. These are really just continuations of, of former, of previous contracts that we've had for, for years.
Any questions?
Nope.
Do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty-one dash zero, zero, nine, eight?
Motion.
On the question, all in favor? Resolution twenty-one dash zero, zero, nine, nine, approving Office of Youth and Family Services Provider Agreements, Brian.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the Department of Human Services Office in Youth, of Youth and Family Services Provider Agreements for fiscal year 2021 through 2022 with the following. Children's Choice Drug and Alcohol Treatment Services, Friendship House, and the Institute for Human Resources. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April 21st, 2021. Once again, Madam Commissioner, here is Director Browning.
Uh, these provider contracts again are, are continuations. With the exception of Drug and Alcohol Treatment Centers, the three are placement resources, meaning uh, when we have to put kids in foster care, if we don't have someone in our own network in our own classroom, they're placed in outside and uh, other, with other agencies.
Anyone have any questions for Bill?
No.
Do I have a motion to approve twenty-one dash zero, zero, nine, nine?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor? Aye. Resolution twenty-one dash zero, one, zero, zero, approving Office of Youth and Family Services Detention Contracts.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the Department of Human Services Office of Youth and Family Services Detention Contracts for the fiscal year 2021 through 2022 with Bucks County Detention and Chester County Detention. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April 21st, 2021. Madam Commissioner, once again, here is Director Browning.
These are uh, um, contracts to allow us to place kids in other detention centers. They're not bedholds or reserved beds, they're just used as needed if uh, we're unable to place them in Northampton where we do have a, a bedholds.
Does anyone have any questions for Bill?
Oh.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Looks like you're around for one more, Bill, so. Resolution twenty-one dash zero, one, zero, one, approving Office of Youth and Family Services Change Orders.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the Department of Human Services Office of Youth and Family Services Change Orders with SCRAM Systems. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April 21st, 2021. Finally, once again, here is Director Browning.
This is the system to allow workers to complete a majority of their activities in the field and have it documented and analyzed. This is a further enhancement, uh, was through a lot of negotiation. Um, originally the, the, it was uh, uh, five million dollars, but through working with uh, uh, back and forth and showing the benefit, we're able to get the pretty much the same functionality for $200,000, but, and this will not be county dollars.
Any questions for Bill? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Bill.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Good day.
Moving on to resolution twenty-one dash zero, one, zero, two, approving the IP grants.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the submission of the intermediate punishment grant to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency in amount of $419,941. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April 21st, 2020. Madam Commissioner, here to speak upon that is our Treatment Court Coordinator, Ms. Mary Liz Loftus.
Good morning. Yes, we are just looking for approval to submit the um, intermediate punishment grant. Um, we submit this every year, um, and just like you said, we are looking to apply for It will assist our participants with um, treatment. We pay for drug testing, we pay for sober living if they need a sober house to go to, and it also helps offset some of the cost for salaries and overtime for probation. Does anyone have any questions?
No, I don't.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Mary Liz, it looks like you're sticking around. Resolution, the resolution twenty-one dash zero, one, zero, three, Brian?
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the submission of the Adult Probation Grant in Aid to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency in the amount of $198,536. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April 21st, 2021. Once again, Madam Commissioner, here is Coordinator Loftus.
And this is another Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency Grant that we are applying for. Um, I guess this is something that they had gotten in the past through the state, but now it's going through PCCD and this is going to help adult probation pay for um, their overtime to us, offset some of the overtime costs.
Any questions for Mary Liz?
Nope.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve twenty-one dash zero, one, zero, three? On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
You too.
Resolution number twenty-one dash zero, one, zero, four, entering into an agreement with Lackawanna College, Brian?
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into an agreement with Lackawanna College for the administration and operation of a Lackawanna County Workforce Developmental Board Business Education Partnership Grant Project to provide 15 Lackawanna County Intermediate Grade Level Students with a robotic STEM Educational Learning Experience during the summer of 2021. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April 21st, 2021. Madam Commissioner, here to speak upon that is our Director of Economic Development, Ms. Brenda Sacco.
Morning, everyone. This resolution states that the county is entering into an agreement with Lackawanna College to administer a program to provide 15 intermediate level students with a STEM learning experience. The BEP proposals were all part of a formal RFP process and were approved at a Lackawanna County Workforce Development Board meeting prior to being put forth for adoption. Does anyone have any questions?
Okay, do I have a motion to approve twenty-one dash zero, one, zero, four?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Brenda, sit tight, you'll be here a while. Do I, uh, resolution twenty-one dash zero, one, zero, five, entering into an agreement with the Scranton Chamber of Commerce, Brian?
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into an agreement with the Greater Scranton Chamber of Commerce, Skills in Scranton for the Administration and Operation of a Lackawanna County Workforce Development Board Business Education Partnership Grant Project designed to connect educators, students, parents, and the business community in career awareness activities to commence April 1st, 2021 through October 31st, 2021. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April 21st, 2021. Madam Commissioner, once again, here is Director Sacco.
Uh, this resolution states that the county is entering into an agreement with the Greater Scranton Chamber of Commerce, the Skills in Scranton, uh, to administer a program to provide career awareness, um, activities. The BEP proposal, um, again, this is another BEP proposal and it was part of a formal RFP process and it was approved at the Lackawanna County Workforce Development Board meeting prior to being put forth for adoption. Does anyone have any questions?
Nope.
Do I have a motion to approve twenty-one dash zero, one, oh, five?
Motion.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, resolution twenty-one dash zero, one, zero, six, uh, entering into a purchase of services agreement with Educational Data Systems Incorporated, Brian?
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County on behalf of the Workforce Developmental Board does hereby enter into a purchase of additional services agreement and does hereby award a maximum of $150,000 in rapid response funding to Educational Data Systems Incorporated to be used for individuals meeting eligibility requirements for dislocated workers as defined by the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act of 2014. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April 21st, 2021. Once again, Madam Commissioner, here is Director Sacco.
Uh, this resolution states that the county on behalf of the Workforce Development Board is amending a contract with EDSI to add additional services. The original contract was executed in July of 2019 and allows for an amendment for such services. Does anyone have any questions?
Okay, do I have a motion to approve twenty-one dash zero, one, zero, seven? I'm sorry, zero, one, zero, six.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Moving on, twenty-one dash zero, one, zero, seven, entering into an agreement with Johnson College, Brian?
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into an agreement with Johnson College for the administration and operation of a transitional Assistance for Needy Families Project, providing awareness of career opportunities in the STEM workforce, coupled with college readiness skills for 20 TANF eligible youth to commence on April 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2021. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April 21st, 2021. Once again, Madam Commissioner, here is Director Sacco.
Uh, this resolution states that the county is entering into an agreement with Johnson College to administer a TANF project, providing STEM career awareness and college readiness activities. The TANF proposals were all part of a formal RFP process and were approved by the Lackawanna County Workforce Development Board prior to being put forth for adoption. Does anyone have any questions?
Okay, do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty-one dash zero, one, zero, seven?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Brenda, you got one more, I think, right?
Two more.
Resolution twenty-one dash zero, one, zero, eight.
Entering into an agreement with UNC, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into an agreement with the United Neighborhood Centers of Northeastern Pennsylvania for the administration and operation of the Transitional Assistance for Needy Families Project, providing education and leadership activities, adult mentorship, and community service for 20 TANF eligible youth to commence on April 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2021. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April 21st, 2021. Once again, Madam Commissioner, here is Director Sacco.
Uh, this is um, where the county again is entering into an agreement uh, to administer a TANF project, uh, which will provide education and socialization skills activities for youths age thirteen to eighteen. Um, again, this TANF proposal was part of a formal RFP process and approved at a Workforce Development Board meeting prior to being put forth for adoption.
Okay, do I have a motion, a motion to approve twenty-one dash zero, one, zero, eight?
Motion.
On the question, all in favor? Aye. Twenty-one dash zero, one, zero, nine, entering into an agreement with Better Tomorrow, Brian?
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into an agreement with Better Tomorrow's of the, for the administration and operation of a transitional assistance for needy families project, providing after-school tutoring, academic enrichment, and job readiness activity for up to 15 TANF eligible youth to commence on April 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2021. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April 21st, 2021. Finally, Madam Commissioner, here is Director Sacco.
Again, this resolution is where the county is entering into an agreement, this time with Better Tomorrow's, another TANF project, and is going to provide after-school activities supporting academic enrichment and job readiness in STEM occupational areas. This uh, was also part of a formal RFP process and approved by the Workforce Development Board. Any questions?
No, I just want to say, Brenda, I think it, it appears as if the Workforce Development Board is becoming much more active.
Yes.
In the last year or two.
Yes.
Than it had been for many years. And I think that's uh, to commend you for the, the great job and I think it's, I think it's important because of the situation we're in with trying to get people in a position to be able to do uh, the jobs that are available at this point in, in, in life and in this point in history. So I just want to tell you, you're doing a great job. I'm glad the Workforce Development Board is stepping up to the plate and just thank you for all your work.
Thank you very much. And I, I don't believe that everyone realizes all the services um, that the Career Link has to offer. So I, I do encourage um, individuals to check out their website and, and social media pages because there are a lot of different programs that can truly benefit our, our workforce and our students who are, you know, getting ready to enter into the workforce.
We've got these manufacturers coming in now and they need specific job skills and we're trying to help people learn how to do those job skills and that's, that's the, that's the key. And I think again, it seems like it's much more active than it has been in, in quite a while and again, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do I have a, I didn't move to mo, I didn't move for this yet, right? Do I have a motion for approval of twenty-one dash zero, one, zero, nine?
Take that motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Brenda, have a nice day.
You, you too.
Resolution twenty-one dash zero, one, one, Z, one, one, zero, I don't know where Z came from, uh, approving provider contracts for the Office of Behavioral Health, Intellectual Disabilities and Early Intervention, Brian?
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the provider contracts between the Department of Human Services, Lackawanna-Susquehanna Behavioral Health, Intellectual Disabilities and Early Intervention Program with Wilkes-Barre Behavioral Hospital and the Elizabeth A. Kippi Cash for the fiscal year of 2020 to through 2021 as attached here too. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April 21st, 2021. Madam Commissioner, here to speak upon that is our Behavioral Health Director, Mary Ann Colbert.
Good morning Commissioners.
Morning.
Uh, these are two provider contracts. We're requesting your approval for fiscal year 2020, 2021 to meet the unique needs of two Lackawanna County citizens. The first one is Wilkes-Barre Behavioral Hospital for an individual who needed a specific level of care and who was not medical assistance eligible. The second one is for um, a toddler that moved to Lackawanna County from another county and we agreed as required by the Office of Child Development to contract with that child's current physical therapist to continue to deliver uh, physical therapy services for continuity of care. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about these two contracts.
Anyone?
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve? Oh, thank you, Mary Ann, by the way. So I have a motion to approve twenty-one dash zero, one, one, zero.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you Commissioners.
Have a good day.
You too.
Mary, have you heard you? No, she's gone.
Sorry, I let her go.
That's all right. I just wonder if she heard you back, anything back from that actuary on that other uh, project we're working on.
Okay, we'll send her an email.
Thank you.
Okay.
Resolution twenty-one dash zero, one, one, three, approving Area Agency on Aging Professional Service Agreements, Brian?
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the Department of Human Services Area Agency on Aging Professional Service Agreements for the fiscal year April 1st, 2021 through June 30th of 2023 with the following, CEO Weinberg Northeast Regional Food Bank, Language Interpreting K-Petel, and the Valley Home, Home Care. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April 21st, 2021. Madam Commissioner, here to speak upon that is our Deputy Director of Aging, Ms. Erin McDonald.
Hello. Hi, sir.
Morning.
Good morning. The um, contracts for the CEO Weinberg National Northeast Regional Food Bank amendments are to assist with nutrition programming, emergency food relief, and fresh food distribution events in coordination with the Area Agency on Aging. Um, we've seen an increase in the amount of food needed. We've seen an increase in the amount of food needed by our older adults during this pandemic, so we thought that this would be a good partnership.
Any questions, Sarah?
No.
Do I have a motion to approve 21-0113?
Motion.
Second.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Sarah, you're sticking around for two more?
Yep.
Resolution 21-0114, entering into an Area Agency on Aging Agreement, Brian?
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the Department of Human Services Area Agency on Aging Professional Services Agreement with Valley in Motion for March 1st, 2021, through June 30th of 2021, for a northeastern Pennsylvania Blue Zones assessment at a cost not to exceed $20,000. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April 21st, 2021. Madam Commissioner, here once again is Deputy Director McDonald.
So the Blue Zones are areas of strong population health and wellness. This donation is actually a human service contribution to the Valley in Motion to complete the assessment phase. A community well-being analysis of the Scranton metro area found that the region could save $952 million over 10 years in medical costs, productivity costs, and regional economic impacts if adopted a comprehensive Blue Zones program.
Any questions for Sarah?
No, matter of fact, I had, on my podcast, I had Gus Fahey from Valley in Motion, and it's a great program they have, and they're going to do some good things, so that's all good stuff.
But.
Do I have a motion to approve 21-0114?
Motion.
Second.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
One more, Sarah. Resolution 21-0115, approving Area Agency on Aging Amendments, Brian?
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the Department of Human Services Area Agency on Aging Amendments with the following: Greater Scranton Chamber of Commerce Skills in Scranton and serving seniors, as attached. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April 21st, 2021. Finally, Madam Commissioner, here is Deputy Director McDonald.
The Chamber of Commerce Workforce Reimbursement Funds to Lackawanna County businesses approved to administer COVID-19 relief, including vaccinations, mortgage, rent, and utility funds to Lackawanna County residents. And the serving seniors amendments are to promote new initiatives because of the pandemic, such as visits like technology-related visits to nursing homes and nursing home visitation through the pandemic.
Any questions for Sarah?
No.
Do I have a motion to approve 21-0115?
Make the motion.
Second.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Opportunity for the public to address the board, Tracy?
We did not receive any emails today.
Hey, Commissioners, other business?
Lost Jerry.
That's a usual.
I'll go.
Go ahead.
Can you actually hear it in montage where we, at the pavilion, and we're in the process of doing the 3,600-second dose vaccines? As you can see in the background, I feel like a news reporter, but.
You look like one.
Yeah, right? I got here about six this morning, so. We have Mark Doer, the maintenance people, we have the sheriff's people here, everybody's working together. It's going very smoothly, so I hope it doesn't rain, but yeah, so reporting live from.
Brian, do you have anything you want to add?
Yes, Madam Commissioner, very quickly, while Mr. Nettorianni stepped away, as you can see, the Commissioner Schirmeck is up there for the second shot from the 31st. We are having another one next Wednesday on the 28th with basically the same amount of shots, but they will be the first shots, they are Pfizer, there's Hometown Healthcare. I know that we have about 1,700 people signed up already for that. We are encouraging everyone else to get signed up for that. You can go to Hometown Healthcare's Facebook page and sign up on it, or you can call 211, or you can take their form here. Actually, it's a very long form, if you just want to click it, but it's actually a very, very good website. It's called form.jotform.com backslash, and it's 210946476290158. And I know no one's going to write all that down, but just go to their hometown, their Facebook, and click onto it, and you can get yourself an appointment. We are encouraging all them. Any manufacturers or large employers out there who have not had their employees vaccinated yet, please contact me here, the email at jeffersb@lackawannacounty.org. We will set something up for you. We have already reached out to most of the colleges and talked to them, and we're working with them to get their students vaccinated. There are a couple more that I have to reach out to today. Finally, obviously, it was reported in yesterday's paper that we are the largest county of the 67 counties in the state to have the highest vaccination rate. We are just behind Forest County and Montour County, whose combination of their populace is about 26,000 total. So, you know, for our 209,000 people, we are at almost 46%. We are encouraging everyone to keep going to these clinics so that we can get back to Rail Rider Games, we can get back to the Fourth of July celebrations downtown, and basically be able to get back to a sense of normalcy where we can go and have fun with our friends and our families in our backyards, and everybody can maybe go out for a happy hour. It'd be nice.
Get back to the festa italiano and the parade and everything.
I mean, we certainly can't have these types of celebrations if we don't get to the 75 percentile in Lackawanna County. It's forcing our hand with the CDC guidelines that, you know, need herd immunity. We are at almost 46% without the clinics that we've held so far this week and are holding right now with where Chris is. We need to get to that 75 percentile so that we can have festivals and gatherings on the Courthouse Square without any worries. So we encourage everyone to do that. That's all I have, Madam Commissioner. I'm sorry, I took up Commissioner Nettorianni's time. He can speak now if he would like, thank you.
Anything, Jerry?
Yeah, I have one thing. I just want to let everybody know, this is National Volunteers Month, and we've been very lucky with all of the people that have been helping us. The food pantries and the food distribution, tax preparation, Medicaid counseling, nursing home visits, after-school programs, reading programs for children, coaching, charitable fundraising, and community events. And it's, all of the volunteers make this possible. And a lot of it goes through our human services, particularly our Department of Area Agency on Aging. And Jason Kavulich is a young man that has done an absolute outstanding job. Once we got almost all of, as many as we can, guess, seniors vaccinated, Jason didn't stop there, he continued on. He got into the minorities, the people that don't, aren't in touch, even though it's not his responsibility, and he did. I mean, there's some people that need convincing to get the vaccine, but it's important for all of us that we convince them all that it's not a bad thing. It is a good thing, and it's good for everybody. And again, Jason and Bill Browning, Human Services Director, they deserve a lot of credit for what they've done, and I just want to thank them and Chief Jeffers for the stress that he's had to put himself through for the last two months over this. I mean, it was, this has been an interesting ride for me.
I think the point is, is that everybody wants everything to go back to normal, but you can't do that unless you get the shot. Go get vaccinated.
Yeah, we're going to get everybody done, and again, some people have worked really, really hard at it, and I just want to thank them for everything they've done. All right, that's all I've got, Mr. Jeffers.
Anyone else?
Isn't there a seniors in the park this Friday?
I don't know if it's this Friday or not.
This Friday or next Friday.
We'll make sure we get that and post it out on our website.
Website, yeah, and again, our website is something people should look at. We're trying to fix that, make that more user-friendly, but it's a work in progress. But it's, you know, it's been a challenge. We had four years of the last administration and a year of COVID. This has been a challenge for me, so I'm glad to, I'm glad to do it, and I think we're doing a really, really good job. You know, Chris and Debbie have been wonderful to work with, and I want to thank them and our entire staff, you know, Tracy Hart, Brian Jeffers, Frank Gergio.
Donnie.
Donnie Fredrickson, yeah, I mean, it's been an adventure, it's been an interesting year, but thank you all.
And get vaccinated.
Yeah, get vaccinated.
Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
See ya.
Thank you.